Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 27th, 2023 Litchfield Board of Selectmen meeting. The board has just come out of a paperwork review. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight is the start of the new session, coming off of town meeting. We were going to have the swearing in of the newest selectman, Steve Gannon. However, that already happened today. Hopefully, he'll be joining us remotely. He's ill at the moment.
And they have to sit here.
Also, we'd like to say thank you for Selectman LaSalle's for his last three years of work on this board and over his 40 years of dedication to the town of Litchfield. The first item we have this evening is the election of the chairman. Do we have a motion for a chair?
I make a motion for Bob Larry, Bob to be chair.
We have a motion for Mr. Larry. Do we have a second?
I'll enter seconds so we can have a discussion.
Do we have any other motions for chairs? All right. Discussion?
This, I mean, we talked about this for a few years now, Steve and I have. And then, you know, we decided to put it on hold during COVID and the last couple of years with COVID. So, but we decided, you know, Steve and I had talked and basically spoke about somebody not being chair for too many years in a row, giving somebody else a voice and an opportunity so that it didn't become that person's board as it has in years past. Before we got on board, there was, you know, it was somebody's board for a lot of years. And it's good to have differing viewpoints. Am I correct?
I don't remember having a conversation, but yes, I have had it for the last four years and I know that in the past, there has been a will to change, but we've spoken and thought that consistency due to COVID and so forth was the best thing for the board at the time. All right, with no other motions, Mr. Larry?
I vote for myself. I have to abstain, right?
Whatever you'd like to do.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Lynch?
Bob Larry.
Is that a yes?
It's a yes.
Ms. Queenan?
So you're verifying that you're okay, that you have this conversation?
I'm comfortable whenever the will of the board is. I'm very, very comfortable with it.
Okay.
He needs a vacation.
I'll say aye.
I am also a yes.
Guess that you had the conversation.
Mr. Larry is our new chairman. Chairman Larry, your turn, Peter.
Welcome to the real world.
Um, like next we'll entertain a motion for vice chair.
Not me.
That's not a motion.
I will make a motion for Ms. Queenan.
I'll second that for discussion.
I'm all for it.
Is there any other nominations?
No one here.
All those in favor, Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
I am an aye.
I am also an aye.
I have to abstain.
Yes.
If you choose.
I'll abstain.
We normally do, other boards don't.
Welcome to your future.
I don't know if I'll say that right. All right. Next on the deck. You have to work right here. Swearing in.
Who are you going to swear in tonight?
A wonderful town clerk. Me? You need to re-swear, Kim.
We're going to swear.
Me? Didn't I come in and I already did something, right? I took the oath, right? I'm doing it in public, is that it?
Normally what we do is the board of selectmen that is elected, they will be sworn in at the meeting.
Okay.
For the public to witness the swearing in.
Gotcha.
You had a meeting?
I had to go to the planning board, so I had to get sworn in.
So you had to be sworn in ahead of time. And Steve was sworn in earlier today because he wasn't feeling well. So he came in all masked up and we got him sworn in so that he could, he could be.
Steve came in today.
Hopefully participate remotely soon.
And yeah, maybe.
This, the Florida visit was too much for him?
The what?
The Florida visit was too much for him?
Sure.
Stand there.
Right, I was going to say, but he didn't go to Florida.
A little bit off the coast of Florida.
Okay, I'm just, yeah. What do you want me to do?
Whatever you want to do.
Do I have to say something, read something? You have to say aye.
No.
Okay, tell me what you got to do. I'll raise my hand. Get the pen out of it.
Stand up.
Stand up?
Yeah, stand up.
Stand up.
Okay. Raise my hand too?
Yes.
You left one.
All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent upon you as a selectwoman to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the state of New Hampshire, so help you God? Again.
I do. Thank you.
Since we have Ms. Breen here, and I know she comes into work very early in the morning, should we just jump ahead and do the other swearing ins so she can get home to her family and her dog?
Nobody else has to be sworn in, I don't think?
He does. CIP.
You swear in for the CIP? I thought it was an appointment.
It's an appointment.
Oh, appointment, sorry.
Really?
They do.
Okay.
Everybody has to be sworn in.
Is there anybody else that? You guys here for public input or? Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, so, all right, so if since.
Do you have paperwork in there?
Yes.
His paperwork's in there somewhere, yes, so.
It was in there, I remember.
We want to. This is a reappointment to the Capitol Improvement Committee.
CIP? You want to be a CIP?
So.
What's that?
What group are you on?
CIP.
So these, I think all need to be voted on.
Yeah, we should nominate him and vote him in and then she can swear him in.
Yeah.
So we'll entertain a motion to nominate Mr. Stone.
So moved.
Yep, I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weber and a second by Ms. Queenan. All those in favor, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
I am a yes, Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Queenan?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, zero.
Who's chair tonight, you or him?
Congratulations.
All right.
Want to change seats?
Next one.
Raise your hand.
I'm comfortable.
All right. Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon you as a, as CIP to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Excellent. All right, just meet his, yay.
I'm about ready to say computers don't help.
This is all the tax, these are the tax credits. It's these.
You know how to use them.
She found it.
We don't.
We were looking at the tax credits, it's right here.
You IT guys are not good for me.
Line please.
I did.
You did?
Uh, this.
I don't see you signing.
Is that my name right there?
Is it?
You promised, I promise.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I haven't gone through that folder yet. There's a lot of paperwork in there, yes.
I came early to assign everybody, and I know Mr. Stone wanted to get his ass in there.
Thank you. All right, next up, Board of Selectmen Assignments to Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Kim, you had spoken about possibly stepping back from planning, whereas you've been on it for seven years.
It's a question I, can we have a discussion about that?
Oh, absolutely.
When I first ran for selectmen, it was to tighten the communication gap between NRPC, Board of Selectmen, and Planning Board. I think we've done that.
Yep.
So the question, I, what, I just want to have a discussion with us is if I remove myself from the planning board, do I hurt that process really? You know, because I'm attending about eighty-something meetings a year.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if Mr. Weber would be up for going back to planning board. I don't think Kevin expresses that he wants to go back. I don't mind taking it, but I just wanted to have a discussion.
I personally feel that you have a huge value in there, especially being part of NRCP.
Okay.
That you have a lot you can bring to it.
All right, I'm okay with keeping. Just wanted to have a discussion.
That's just my opinion, I mean, as you know.
Kim, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Forty years of my life, I dealt with it.
I know.
I want you to have it.
Thank you. It's okay, we have a lot of work to do there. So we'll keep going with that.
Okay, so you will stay on planning board?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
I'll stay on rec.
What?
I'll stay on rec.
On rec? You weren't on rec.
I'm on rec.
Aren't you on conservation?
I had rec.
He had rec.
Conservation.
Conservation.
Can we have a discussion at all on conservation?
Just cut down trees.
I think, well, conservation and recreation have been working very closely together.
Yeah.
Under, you know, Chairman Gannon at the time with Breck and with Chairman Brennan. Now with, you know, Selectman Gannon with us, I think that's a strong bond to keep back with him over at conservation, because there's a lot of good momentum going on and so forth. So I think, you know, my personal opinion, he's not here to speak for himself, but I think that that would be a good spot to put Steve coming out of the gate.
Knock me off is what you're saying?
I'm just changing things up. We got to find a place to put Steve, right? I don't think, I don't think heritage, I don't think he's comfortable, my personal opinion, once again, he's not here, so whatever the will of this board is, I don't think he's ready for a budget yet. I mean, being a first-year person, jumping on budgets is pretty tough. Bob did do it.
That's because everybody looked the other way.
That's right, you did jump on and you know that the learning curve was like.
What did Kennedy said Richard do? He did these.
My thought would be that if, if, you know, Kevin's been there for a couple of years now and if he wanted to stay, I don't know about taking him off.
I want to stay, stay there because I think, I think the group is doing good.
I think we've made real strides with that group the last few years.
Yep.
I agree we have, and I just like the workmanship that they had along with recreation and to keep that going would be great.
I think we still keep that going with the present.
So Kim's the planning staff.
Sense, the gentleman was cutting brush along Route 3A this week.
Yep.
You know, I got somebody taking care of the tree fall.
Conservation.
And he doesn't know about it, but it'd be all gone by the end of the week.
Don't know yet, okay.
All right.
Rich LaSalle's had these groups here, right? I don't know who's taking those on.
PFOA.
Yeah, Rich had heritage, PFOA, and emergency management.
PFOA was a separate group?
Yeah, that's, that's more of a state thing, I believe. Wasn't April on that for a while?
She was on for a while and then they weren't doing anything, so she got off and I don't think we have a community member right now.
No, we don't.
You don't have a community member and you have Mr. Bone who has been appointed by the House.
The House.
Okay, yep.
So it was Rich.
Yeah, it was Rich and now it's Ralph, yeah. All right. Well, I'll, I'll stay with budget another, another year if that, if the board has no objections.
Appreciate that.
So we just have heritage and conservation. I would, I would, I would hate to pull Kevin from conservation right now.
Conservation has been going so slick.
Yes.
All the way through, been going good.
Can you make more meetings than you've been making? Because I'm hearing, I was hearing.
You only means I missed because of, because of.
Health. I was just, they just said that there hasn't been a lot of communication with you being part of the conservation was what was reported back to me.
I disagree with that because of, I told them I can't be, because I had a health issue.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just giving feedback what was given to me.
Thank you.
If you can't make a meeting, let one of, let one of us know.
I've always let those who know that I'm not coming.
Okay. Yeah, because it is important to have, have people there.
Us, we ain't got a couple million dollars there making decisions on money. We need someone.
Damn right.
We need someone who's going to be active and be the voice.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
We don't know if we're having an energy commission yet. It's a discussion for later, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
But I don't know if that has to be approved through the town or you can just one up, I wasn't sure. Because I'm just saying why you're allocating people to think about that.
So the discussion on forming an energy commission has gone to legal and I haven't heard back. I don't quite understand how several other towns would have appointed an energy commission and then had time to get the information ready for a warrant. They did it mid-year, so I tend to think we don't need a warrant, although most of your committees were by warrant. So, I mean, if, if legal comes back saying it doesn't need a warrant, then it's up to the will of the board.
It could be a subcommittee off of us, right?
That's what.
So if we look at recreation, there was a subcommittee for Spirit of Litchfield that was appointed and it never went out to warrant anything, and that's a subcommittee of recreation.
And isn't CIP?
CIP is a subcommittee of us, but however, CIP was to warrant on the structure of it.
I mean, you, you would need an energy committee now if we were to look at warrant up next year.
Okay.
Just keep that in the back of your mind when you're allocating.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I would say that Steve has done a really good job with coordinating with the water people. He's got a background in electrical. I mean, if we're going to do energy, I mean, I can't think of a more qualified person on the board to, to represent us. He knows what he's talking about. Was that something you'd be interested in?
I'd be, yeah, I'd take part of that.
Okay.
Just two twenty is good for us.
So the PFOAs, those meetings are at 10 o'clock on Friday morning.
But we don't need anybody from this board that's in there, we just need a, we need a citizen's rep.
Right.
Correct.
Right. It's, they're public meetings, they're open to anybody.
Okay.
They're recorded.
So we need to find a citizen rep, okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna stay with conservation?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Any, anybody? Anybody else? Okay.
I.
So that, what's that?
No, nothing, I just stated, I stated where I thought would have been the right appointment for it.
All right, so that will leave heritage for Mr. Gannon. Emergency management team, we haven't had anything with that in a while. Is that something you'd be interested in?
I can handle that.
Okay. Then that does everything, right?
No, you still need, um.
School facility.
School facility improvement.
Oh. Is that, do you want to stay? You've been.
I can't with the increase in my work, I can't get Wednesdays at three.
Wednesdays at three?
School?
Wednesdays, Wednesdays at three every other week, twice a month, just my schedule is.
Yeah.
Construction has gone crazy this year, so.
Tell me about it. What's going on in construction? Pretty quiet out there.
Yeah. Maybe in Milford. I don't think my workload would allow me to be, to be there every, every other Wednesday.
So what's the school thinking about?
They meet and discuss.
Facilities improvement, building a new school, additions, renovations, go over change orders, planning, media and how to.
I'm not familiar with that, what?
How to go and put it out to the townspeople.
Not familiar with that very much in my life.
Are you available every other Wednesday?
I can make it work.
Okay. Look at you getting busy.
That's how I get old and get busy.
Yeah. Okay, that should do everything, right? Were we missing anything else?
Nope, I think that does them all.
Okay, cool. We get to business?
Kim, just send me something that I, what I'm in charge of.
Yes, I'll, I'll.
You're what I'm saying.
I'll type it up.
Embrail.
Okay. So emergency management, school facilities.
Yep.
Conservation.
Fight up, I may go like me.
Yes, they will. It's a new, it's a new mood over there these days.
I bet you're moose.
So, moving forward. We have an AP manifest from March 21st of 2023 in the amount of $712,775.02 and one for March 28th of '23 in the amount of $1,631,494.95. We have a payroll manifest for March 23rd of '23 in the amount of $62,415.13. We have two elderly exemption denials, four elderly recertifications, two new elderly applications. We have four veterans' tax credit applications for approval and one veteran tax credit denial. We have a timber tax, map 22, lot 14, Corning Farm at Rivers Edge, $1,551.84. We have an abatement, map three, lot six, 85 Charles Bancroft Highway denial. An abatement, map nine, lot 179, sub 41, 40 Brickyard denial. We have the MS 232 report of appropriations actually voted. Are there any items that anybody would like to remove or gel for now? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Weber?
Second.
Second for Ms. Queenan. All those in favor, Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Ms. Queenan?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I haven't looked through the denials and the, and the, and the exemptions, so I can't really speak on that until I get a chance to look at them. So that motion passes three, zero, one.
I came in today to look at it all, so.
Okay. Is there any other business that anybody would like to add to tonight's agenda? All right, public input will occur no earlier than 6:45 PA and it's 6:50, 6:00 PM, so we will open it up for public input. We have some folks here. Come on up. Give us your name and.
Oh my gosh, you got a helmet.
Name and address for you folks, please?
This is a great talk.
All right, I am Amber Flint.
Corey Flint?
This is my husband, Corey Flint, we're 123 Hillcrest. We are here to talk about the idea of having a Fourth of July parade. So we had one in 2020 and it was really fantastic and it was really thrown together last minute and it was a really good turnout of the, of the whole community.
It did in 10 days, I think it was.
Yeah, it was awesome. Jay did a really good job. So I want to start a tradition of doing that yearly. I do not, I want to be really clear that I do not want to take away from Memorial Day Parade because that is very traditional, it is very necessary, it has its place for sure in our community. But the Memorial Day Parade is more of a somber event, which I really love so much, but the Fourth of July is more of a party, fun, celebration type of thing. And the last Fourth of July parade we did was a lot of fun and like that fun kind of seeps into the Memorial Day Parade and it shouldn't really be there because it's more of a somber occasion. So this is a way for our community to have that fun event for Fourth of July. So we were thinking the route for the 2020 parade was a really good route all the way along Albuquerque. I haven't talked to anybody, like the staging areas, I haven't talked to anybody yet. I wanted to get you guys to kind of be involved in that before we start talking to everyone in the community about it. We're thinking about maybe a 10 o'clock start time. Anyone who wants to be in on this parade can just come on in because we're not going to, it's not going to be a really formal event, we will not have a committee, flying by the seat of her pants type of thing. And like so far it was, it worked out well in 2020. If any problems come up, then we might have to change that a little bit, but for right now, we're just going to go, just come, it'll be fun. Let's see, I'm planning on going, after I talk to you guys, I'm planning on going to businesses in town, I'm planning on going to like community groups, individuals, town organizations such as the library, fire, police, all the schools, and see if they're interested in like having groups come. Because other parades I've been to, they've had the band performing, so I know we don't have a marching band and again, I haven't even spoken to Ms. Milligan or anybody else, but maybe they can ride on like a float type of thing, I don't know if that's even possible, but like just some ideas that we've, we've come up with, so. But that was my plan to go out in the community and actually talk to a bunch of people. Let's see, it will be volunteer only, we will not be raising any money for this, we will not be charging anything for this, it's just a fun thing for the town to do. There'll also probably only be a riding only parade, just because it's going to be a long route along Albuquerque, so, yeah. And walkers, I know I've been a walker in the Memorial Day Parade and that was, that was good, that distance is good, but this will be like.
Good exercise.
It was like three miles, the last parade that we had.
Five, really?
Okay, it was a lot, it was long.
We, we had a lot of discussion about where to end it, people on the walk, how far it was, it was, it was a lengthy route.
Right, so.
Good for you.
That's, it was fun, I liked it. So anyway, that's, that's my pitch to you guys. I think it would be really good for the town, I think it would be a really great tradition to start and keep going, so. What else do I need to do? Do you have any questions and concerns?
I think the biggest thing you have to consider is the length of the parade.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, from which way to which, which way? You know, get to pick up the schools and get the town hall, police, the fire, and that's basically the endpoint, you know what I'm saying? Anything beyond that, okay, you got the pink house, okay? You know, but you got to look, look at it like, like, like that, the length of it.
Yeah, so in 2020, they started at.
Hidden Creek?
Hidden Creek, yes.
We started, we, everybody lined up at Hidden Creek and it came on down.
Right, and then, and then it ended at the high school, so I'm thinking in my head that's, that's the same route that we're going to do.
Okay.
That was a good route, actually, it was a really good.
It was, it was good staging, it was, it was, it was a great event, everybody who did it absolutely loved it and it was, you know, something to look forward to.
Up from roots.
July, so. I for one am all for it.
Yeah, I think Jason and Rick Shabino did a wonderful job with that, getting that, taken care of a couple of years ago and I think it should be, we should have a second taking care of a couple of years ago, and I think it should be, we should have a second parade.
I've talked to Jason already, he's like, I am on board, I can help out, but a little bit, not, not in charge, so.
The old days, we used to go from pine, pine grass, to hill, hill grass, and the reason for that was the cemetery was there, the other cemetery was here. We, we did that, and we're, okay, I live there.
I have a question, do we need a permit or something, or a yearly permit?
Yeah, the police will take care of that.
Do we have the process down? About a permit?
We applied for it.
So we applied for it today, but the paperwork, it's been turned in to the police, so.
Okay.
They had a great turnout last time.
Yeah.
That was, it was...
It was, everyone's home and not doing anything, so I don't know...
Covid, and nobody had been out.
I don't think it's going to be as big, I'm hoping it will be, but I don't think it'll be as big, because...
Well, it says no.
Don't be surprised.
We can certainly build momentum over the years.
Don't be surprised.
It could end up bigger than you planned.
Which is okay.
So does it rain or snow?
They'll still show. So that permit gets the police lined up, the fire, everybody's all lined up? Okay. I'm not sure, is it just the one?
It's a permit to demonstrate.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure we had one, or we talked about one, I have to sign that one.
Sorry.
I have no issues with it, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, and...
Part of the community, let's do it.
I would say carry on and tell us what you need from us.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. All right, sounds good.
Does anybody have anything else they want? I think we're all in agreement.
Awesome. Then we'll just keep on rolling.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your efforts.
It's good to be sir. You need to get that thing that she has, eye to glare.
Can't wear it anymore, all the hairs, scrape off all the hair on my head left.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a, have a next thing.
Do we have any other public input? Not hearing any, we will close public input at seven oh five. All right. Next up.
Mr. Chairman, we have Sluckman Gannon, who is joining us via webex.
Oh, I didn't see the TV go on.
Who is that?
How you feeling? Hope you're muted.
He feels muted.
Unmute yourself.
Voice sounds great.
Unmute yourself.
Mr. Bethu has ever sounded.
Steve, you're muted. There you go, Bobby, a little bit better. Turn your volume up.
Got it. Fixed it.
I'm going to survive.
Formers is there.
Oh, hang on, we're going to turn the volume up so we can hear you.
They'll give it to me, you take it.
All right, try that, Steve.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep, better. Steve will turn us up some more. There we go. So we're just about to jump into...
Close caption.
We're just about to jump into our business, okay? We just did the consent items, we did the appointments, and public input, so now we're on to business.
We need a motion so Steve can participate remotely.
I made a motion, we participate remotely with a guy who hasn't shaved.
Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Lynch.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. All those in favor, Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
I am also a yes. Motion carries four zero zero. Can you please just tell us why you're remote, and is there anyone in the room with you?
All right, I am home, I am alone, and I'm dealing with an illness.
Okay. Well, we hope you feel better, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And you have heritage commission.
I draw love.
Okay. So, so under business, do you have the agenda there?
I will bring it up, yep, keep going.
Okay. Under business, we have approval of the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Yes.
Any alterations? And Kim, that's usually your spot.
No, it led all good to me.
Okay. Hearing that, we'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I made a motion, we approve.
Motion by Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. All those in favor, Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries four zero one, you have to abstain. I didn't even give you the chance. Next up, we have the public hearing for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two state clean water SRF grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to create a stormwater asset management program. Ms. Kleiner, please fill us in.
So this is the grant that we applied to, we put out an RFP, and CEI replied to that RFP, we worked with them to develop a program, we submitted it to the state, we heard back last week that we have been granted the thirty thousand. We will work with them to create a database management program, where we will then map all of the stormwater sites, and from there, we will be able to evaluate them and track all that information, so that we can report on our MS four.
That is great.
Yep, that's good news. Thank you very much for all your work on this, and Mr. Brown too, right? Mr. Brown as well, our road agent.
Oh, God, give it, God.
We need to have a motion to accept this money, correct?
We need to accept the money, and then there's actually what they call a certificate of vote, so I need to be authorized by you to execute the grant documents.
I make a motion, we accept.
Okay, I can second that, you want me to read the motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to accept thirty thousand dollars from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for the purpose of the stormwater asset management system and to authorize Kim Kleiner, town administrator, to execute the grant documents on behalf of the town of Litchfield. I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay.
We will change that to a motion from Ms. Queenen and a second from Mr. Lynch. All those in favor, Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero.
Your seat is right here waiting for you.
Your first vote. Okay, next up, we have... We've already done the committees, so we're going to do approval of purchases, pickle court, pickleball court project.
No, we got to go back up.
Yeah.
We have to do the appointments of each individual person?
We did, just did Mr. Stone.
We do? Oh, all right.
So F we can skip, we're up at A.
Um, A we can skip?
Nope, A we have to do, we can skip, F when we get to it, Mr. Stone was just...
So we have the appointments, should we do them all at once, or we want to do them one at a time?
Do all of us.
Had them both ways before.
All of us is good.
Anybody?
I would probably take, I'd take them in batches.
At least Ms. Mills.
Okay, yeah, let's do the deputy town clerk, tax collector, Laura Mills, for a three-year term. We'll entertain a motion to...
I have a motion to reappoint.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Lynch. Any discussions? I'd just like to say, she's done a nice job as a number two for Terry, always very pleasant, and I'm glad she's going to stay. So, hearing that, we'll, we'll, Mr. Gannon, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
I am an aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch is an aye, I'm also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Now we can do some batches. Next, we have conservation commission, Joan McGibburn, Harry Manzigan, and Michael Crotto, all three-year terms, correct? Any discussion on this? We'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve conservation commission.
Hey, we have a motion from Ms. Queenen.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Weber. All those in favor, Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
I am an aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Welcome back, folks. Next up, we have heritage commissioner, Carl Frank.
I recommend him.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Lynch.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye, and he has a building background where he understands construction, he knows the old stuff as well.
I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Planning board, Michael Crotto.
He's a lawyer.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Queenen, a second from Mr. Weber. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Lynch?
If he loses his law degree, I will be happy.
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Rec commission, Peter Ames.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Make a motion to appoint Peter Ames? Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Weber?
Stephen, no, does he know?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Gannon. Has he been on the rec for a while?
He has, a long time. He's been the secretary until last year.
Okay.
He's been on longer than I have.
Yeah, okay, very well.
One of the two longest we have, I think, right now.
All right, all those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Okay, aye, but Steve's beard is shorter this year.
I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. We've already done capital improvement with Mr. Stone.
Yep.
Zoning board of adjustments, Jerry Sorensen and John R. Deveraux.
Been there a while.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second from Ms. Queenen. All those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Now we'll do approval of purchases. Pickleball court project.
Denied.
We have, we should do these separate, right?
Yeah, it's two purchase orders.
Yeah, okay, so we have a purchase order from Sport Court Northeast for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
I saw that today.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber.
I will second that.
We have a second from Mr. Gannon. So what is this for?
For the pickleball courts that are being put in, we're doing the site work over at Sawmill right now, and then this is going to be for the courts themselves, then the fencing and all the nets and so forth.
The next vote will be for the fencing, and they're starting construction today.
Okay, very well. All right, all those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
I am going to abstain, as I was the chair for the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries four zero one.
From a clarity standpoint, this, it goes back to the impact fees of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that we released.
We talked about a couple of weeks ago, right?
We released those, and these are two of the purchase orders that go against those impact fees.
I just wasn't a hundred percent sure on that, so, okay, cool. And the second one we have is fences unlimited, we have a purchase order for sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And this is the rest of the money, so...
It's going around the pickleball court.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
From Mr. Weber, we have a motion?
I will second it.
Mr. Gannon will second it. All those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
I will abstain for the same reason as the first one, as being the chair of the rec.
Okay, technicality, can he second the vote? He has abstained, okay.
Can he?
Yep.
Ow.
Okay.
He's abstaining and saying he can't.
Because he sits in the committee, so he can second the motion.
Can second it, but he can't...
But he's not voting for it, he's just getting it so it gets to the point of...
Okay, okay, legal.
Because you know, there's people that love to ring us on that. So, Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Motion carries four zero one.
Before we move on, can I give a quick update on that?
Sure.
Speaking with the gentleman who's putting the courts in, he informed me that the site work and pad work will be done by the end of April, and the two vendors, Sport Court and Fences Unlimited, can start their work as early as May.
No kidding? It'd be a lot of happy people, and they can play pickleball.
A lot of pickle people out there be happy.
Chris Burres and Judy Brennan have been spectacular at spearheading this project.
Yep. Very well.
Just a comment?
Yes.
The dates on these are quick to pay this money, right? Is he in the states?
Yes.
Okay, just like next two days, right?
All right. Next up, we have the approval of the contract with Auctions International. Ms. Kleiner, please fill us in.
Earlier this, last fall, we had identified some automobiles that are up at the highway department that are not being used, and the board asked us to look into auctioning those. So Auctions International is a company that's used by a variety of different towns within New Hampshire. It's all listed via the website, so they have a website, they will list them, they will actually give us a link, we can put it on our website, too, so that people can access them that way, and then they take a fee from the buyer. So our legal counsel looked over the contract, she was in agreement with it. The other spreadsheet that you see there, this is really where the conversation starts. We have to have a minimum, and the reason for that is if we reject a bid, the auction company wants to know what the minimum would have been. So you'll see to the far right of the spreadsheet, which I'm not going to name, there's some minimums there. So there's a two thousand Chevrolet Tahoe, a two thousand and seven Ford Explorer, a two thousand and six Ford, a two thousand international dump truck, and a nineteen-nine international dump truck. Those suggested minimums to the far right were suggested by our road agent.
Okay. Now, we talked about the ba, the old backhoe, since they got a new backhoe, putting that out too. What's the status with that? I don't see that listed here.
It was not listed, we can add it if you'd like. I, my suggestion was, I think that we should keep it for a second, for...
Right now, you just took care of the three cars that are out there, the two dump trucks, the backhoe is part of the budget replacement process, I understand that. See if you can get that to fit, to fit in. That's all I'm saying.
My concern with that is, and I mentioned this a few weeks ago, is that we were told that the backhoe was on its last legs, it was going to die. A new one was needed, we used ARPA funds to buy a new one, then all of a sudden, it can be refurbished and be used. That's, to me, that's deceiving to the taxpayers.
I didn't hear that, okay.
I don't think that's, I think we should stick with the plan that we had, it's just my opinion, the board can do whatever they want to do. But we went on this course saying we're going to buy a new backhoe because the old one was dead. So...
Yes, that was rotted by salt.
Was that, it was rotted by salt?
I saw it, yep. They couldn't get radiator parts for it, and, yeah.
But weren't we going to put this down at the recycle center for a backup, right? Is that what I'm remembering?
Well, that's what they were going to, that's what they were going to do after, but they never, it was, was never mentioned to be used as a backup until after we approved ARPA funds to buy a new one.
I guess my question is, I mean, even if you use it till it dies versus get five hundred bucks for it, I mean...
I think we ought to leave it the way it is.
For a buck, right? I get the whole, I get the whole, you know, optics of it and so forth, that it didn't come out after the fact, but, I mean, what's more important to us, five hundred bucks or maybe getting six months out of it, two years?
Well, and, and I do get that, but I can also see sitting at a budget committee meeting Well, and, and I do get that, but I can also see sitting at a budget committee meeting and having people grill me.
Yeah, as I said, I understand the optics.
Yeah, but the reason why they're gonna grill you has nothing to do with the lo- the logic behind the existing backhoe.
I mean, the, if the board wants to keep it as a backup, that's, you know.
Please do.
Steve?
I, I'm fine either way, I mean, right now we're making a motion on getting what's on the chart right now.
I agree with that. We won't put it on. Mr. Gannon?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Keep it as a backup, I can, I can take the fee. So, we have the four, we have the four issues here. We make, need a motion to, um, send them out to.
I'll make a motion to go with that one, there we go.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Auctions International for the online sale of the five vehicles as discussed.
So particular.
Well, it says it right there next to you.
I, I didn't read it because not, my, my screen.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber. Do you want to second the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second for Mr. Lynch. All those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiner?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
I am an aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Right, and I'm gonna say no because of.
Your concerns.
The position, yep. So, motion passes four one zero.
I can help her with that, Bobby.
Okay, next up, we have, looks like a discussion.
What?
Fire personnel retirement.
Sorry, I won't discuss that.
Well, then down below it says discussion on fire personnel retirement.
I won't discuss that.
Ms. Kleiner, help us out here.
So we have received a letter of retirement from interim chief Nichol. And he wrote the letter, um, we're not, we weren't sure whether the board wanted, uh, the letter read, but it is there, if you'd like.
Did he want it read?
I think that it was important to him for the residents to understand how much he has enjoyed his time here in Litchfield, um, you know, thirty-two and a half years, that's something to be very proud of. Especially in this day and age, and the fact that he has grown amongst the ranks. I can speak for the staff to say that Mr. Nichol is a joy to work with. He is very attentive, he's very attentive to our residents. And I think he has a lot to do with the Litchfield Fire Department being Litchfield Fire Department.
And it was a nicely penned letter, too.
Yes.
So should we read it?
I think we should.
All right.
Who's gonna read it?
Does anybody wanna read it? I'll, I'll read it if nobody else wants to.
You'll read it.
Okay.
I started.
All right, since I've known him forever. Dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, to the Litchfield Board of Selectmen to Liberty Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire. Honorable members of the Board of Selectmen, I write this letter today with the utmost gratitude and appreciation to the town of Litchfield for the last thirty-two and a half years as a full-time employee of Litchfield Fire Rescue. After careful consideration, I have decided it was the right time for both myself and my family to retire and make this change in our lives. It is my intent to retire from the fire department on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Words alone cannot express how much of an honor it has been for me to serve the residents of Litchfield in the community that I have grown up in. I have had the honor of teaching fire safety to many generations of children in my tenure and helping countless people in town through their emergencies. It is with appreciation to the citizens of Litchfield and the men and women of Litchfield Fire Rescue that I have had this opportunity to do a job that I love every day. As I look back on my tenure, the department has accomplished a great deal. Even with the challenges experienced across all job professions, we continue to rise to the challenge and are able to recruit and train new members quickly and effectively. The town's fire protection has improved with the building of a new fire station we have called home for almost five years now. All our equipment is housed indoor and we are able to provide a one-to-four minute response time to the majority of the community. The department has also seen through many difficult times together, ice storms, microbursts, Mother's Day flooding, road collapses, major fires, and several other severe weather events and major power outages. While I am very proud of our accomplishments facing these challenges, it is important to point out that none of them could have been achieved without the commitment, dedication, hard work displayed by the men and women who have served the town of Litchfield and Litchfield Fire Rescue. No fire department can succeed by itself, it cannot be overstated that the department's personnel, you, the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, and the residents of Litchfield have been very supportive in your commu- commitment to see that this department has had what it needs to succeed. This commitment helps the department to grow as the town continues to grow and provide the best service possible to our community. I have also believed that the benefit of fresh ideas and perspectives being brought to the table by anyone within our organization is a key building block for the department to continue to build upon for all future achievements. In closing, it has been both my honor and pleasure to have served the town of Litchfield for the past thirty-five and a half years as both an on-call firefighter for the first three years with the department and as a full-time employee for over thirty-two years. I look forward to working with you and the department over the next two months to transition before my departure. My hope over the next two months is to help advertise, hire, and train my replacement for the full-time firefighter EMT position that will become vacant upon my retirement. I am available to assist in any way needed as the Board of Selectmen works to fill the vacancy of the part-time fire chief's position as well. I want to end by thanking this board for their overwhelming support of me during the course of the last three months that I have been interim fire chief. I appreciate your faith in me leading such a great department. Respectfully, Douglas Nichol.
Thank you.
I want to thank Mr. Nichol for all his years in the town.
Thank you.
It's a long time.
Sure is.
The days when people work somewhere for a couple of years and then move on because the grass is greener.
He stays.
Realize that the grass is pretty green here in Litchfield, so Doug, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your years of help and service to the town. If anybody else have anything to say?
I'm very proud of Doug of what he's done. I was on the Litch- Litchfield Fire Department at the time that he was hired to come, to come on. I did pick on him, he was young, okay, not to say that I sprayed the hose on him many, many times, okay, but he has done well. He's done, done, done well. I have to say one thing, he's gone through elected administrations compared to appointed administrations. And that is very hard, but he still stayed, and that's great.
I, I was looking forward to working with Doug in this new capacity and gonna be sad to see him go.
Yeah, he's done a fantastic job for us, for the community, I mean, he had many chances to go elsewhere and work other places, but he and his wife decided that Litchfield where he was gonna put all his service, so. It was great for what he's done for us.
His travel time has always been short.
So, the, the second part of this is the spreadsheet that you see next to his retirement letter. I went through, um, we've been tracking the number of admin hours that, um, Doug and Ed Clancy, um, to some capacity have been, um, have incurred each week. Those admin hours being what we have designated would have been just chief work. So on an average, seventeen hours a week, um, has been just what would have been chief work. Which equates to about six hundred and eighty-three dollars at the current chief's.
Okay.
So. We looked at the expenses to date in the fire department, and then we estimated, uh, the next twelve weeks. And then starting in June, and the reason we did that is because we wanted to provide the board with at least some recommendation on behalf of the staff of how you could get through the fire department for the rest of the year. Understanding that there had been conversation, other conversation, um, which there wasn't any warrant articles prepared for. Neither do we estimate, looking at the numbers, if that's the route that Litchfield should take. Just from a budget standpoint, just saying that. I have to say that we need to hire someone, a full-time position, to replace the firefighter, Doug's position as a firefighter. There is no way that Paul and even Ed Clancy as an on-call can carry on the fire department after Doug, after April twenty-ninth. And looking at the short time period now, not even sure if we start looking now, we could hire someone by then, so. It, it is crucial that we get it advertised. And at least hire that other fire, full-time firefighter, uh, position.
Firefighter position is what you're referring to.
We need to backfill, we need to backfill Doug, I mean, we need to have another full-time person there without even dealing with the part-time chief. We definitely need to replace Doug.
Correct. Otherwise, we won't have a full-time firefighter.
Correct.
Monday through Friday.
You got a math to determine on this one, it's a math course, guys.
We have Mr. Kelly, who's the.
Paramedic.
Paramedic, and, um.
Yep.
You know, for everything that, um, Mr. Kelly has done, we're very thankful, I mean, he has really stepped up. But. Can't go out by himself.
I mean, I'm personally very comfortable letting interim chief Nichol go off and find his replacement. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's how I feel.
I don't have a problem with him doing it, I, I would, I would like to look at, um, what he's gonna set, put out there and just kinda be familiar with it before he puts it out. Like what, you know, what are the salary lines and the benefit lines, you know, vacation, time off, whatever. This board has been pretty, well, the board before has been pretty, uh.
Flexible.
Well, flexible, but also pretty interested in rather, rather than going the route that the town has hired for so many years, getting into a PTO, personal time off versus, uh, vacation days, sick days, these days, those days. So, maybe we work with Doug on that. And, um, but it, he should be at the forefront of this.
I agree.
I only want the time is of the essence, because we have thirty-three days to get this done.
It, it is of the essence, and I would caution that we don't have PTO written into our personnel.
Correct.
Policy. It, when you're negotiating a job with someone, you, you can, you're the employer, you have the right, but I, I would be very careful about actually making changes that are not, and offering things that aren't in your personnel policy.
Flexibility is required.
Okay.
And you could include in your personnel policy, it's, it's, you know, employees hired after such and such. This is the, the plans that are being offered, um, but we need to have some.
And historically, every year we've gone back and looked at all of our policies and procedures, and we've tweaked them at that time.
Yes.
So Steve, you're suggesting that Doug, Doug, bring a candidate forward, and then we essentially interview him if he believes he's a worthwhile candidate?
I didn't catch that. You're breaking up.
I think Selectman Gannon was saying that, um, interim chief Nichol would bring people to us and we would interview also.
I think so.
Or even himself.
Mm-hmm, yep. Are you, how do you feel about that?
I, I, I like that, I like that idea.
Okay.
Even himself as well, right?
Yeah, he should be here.
I think we need to look at the RSA on it, because a fire chief has a lot more power than any other chief. I think he has every discretion to hire whomever he wants within the RSAs.
Yes.
Yeah.
We want to be able to.
It could be a courtesy, we could ask as a courtesy, when you get down to the final two, can we be part of a conversation with them? But however, I think the power lies with him.
By RSA.
By RSA, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I do think, you know, generally Doug would be very willing to be collaborative about it.
To step in.
While he, he did mention, while he's looking for this position, he wanted to look for other on-call. I mean, he's been out there trying to find more per diem.
Yep.
So. He's been.
In his short days, he's accomplished a lot.
He has been working very hard, and the staff over there, um, is very comfortable with his leadership in the direction that the department's moving.
Things have changed as the, the last chief has left, that's all I have to say.
Okay, so, are we in agreement, let Doug move forward on this? Okay.
I agree.
All right, Steve?
Yep.
Steve, Steve?
George.
Steve, part two? Do we call him George?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Gee Stephen Gannon.
Gee Stephen. Okay, very well.
You're ink on your arm right here.
Let him know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we're gonna do that? Okay. So now, we have town administrator report.
All, all done now.
So.
Oh no, she's got a lot of stuff here.
Um, yes, it's been a busy week. So first you received from the Department of Revenue, um, the final equalization ratio. So, the equalization ratio for two thousand twenty-two came out to seventy-five point nine percent. Meaning, your homes, um, right now their assessment is seventy-five point nine percent of market value. That is not bad, um, considering that you in two thousand twenty-five have a revaluation. So, we've seen some of Nat- Nashville went into a revale this year. They were down in the low seventies before they went into their revaluation. Londonderry had a revaluation in two thousand twenty-one, Hudson just did a revaluation in two thousand twenty-two. It's, there, it's about the level that everyone has been before they've entered into their revaluation. What you might see now, and people have hoped, is that these home values start to level out. Or at least not seeing the climbs that we were seeing before.
Streamed.
So seventy-five is, I thought, I actually thought it would be lower than that, um, when we talked with Avatar a little while ago, and they gave us a preliminary, it was more like seventy-four, so we'll take the seventy-five point nine. I did give you, um, the descriptive, um, just because there's a lot of things that, um, people don't know. So the, the coefficient of, um, dispersion is generally, um, they want to see it under ten, that's what the DRA looks like. So it didn't come out bad, um, but it, it's just a tad over. So, and then, uh, the other, the PRD, which is a price-related differential, again, that's right in line where the DRA would like to see it, so I think you've got some healthy values, and I think that they're correct in, in the general scheme of things. I mean, you're dealing with a massive appraisal system, so that's.
Doug, bless you doing that one.
That's generally where we, where we like to see things, so that was that.
Thanks.
Uh, the NHMA had a presentation this week on the state budget, which is between the, the Senate and the House right now. Last fall, when we talked to the budget committee, we warned that we were a little worried about where revenues might be. So, for fiscal twenty-three, um, the actual meals and rooms was a hundred and twenty-one point five million distributed, which was a seventy-five percent increase over the pro- over twenty-one. So, in House Bill One, the proposed fiscal twenty-four estimates one twenty-one point one, so just a little low. And then one twenty-three point five in fiscal twenty-five. So not at all what we were expecting last fall when we talked to budget, it's just.
What was it for twenty-five again?
One twenty-three point five.
Red paint, yellow paint, green paint, pink paint?
Revenue sharing, which was suspended way back in two thousand and ten. If it hadn't been suspended in two thousand and ten, that's by RSA thirty-one A, they, they share the surplus with the towns. If they hadn't suspended it back in two thousand and ten, they estimate three hundred and twenty-five million dollars, which would have gone to the towns and cities.
Cool.
But, they did suspend it again in the House Bill Two, which is.
That's what they do up there.
Yeah, they're keeping it suspended. Highway block grants, so thirty-five point four million was for fiscal twenty-three. That's estimated at thirty-two in fiscal twenty-four, and thirty-two point one in fiscal twenty-five. So over fi- twenty-four and twenty-five, you'll lose five point mil- five point nine million in highway block.
Well, it's not good.
Not bad.
No, that's not as, as good as.
No, but it's not bad.
But it's not as bad, um.
Yeah.
As what we thought, you know, we've, we were looking at, we're watching the revenues. We have pretty much bi-weekly calls where, um, we talk about these things with Catherine Heck, who's an NHMA financial person. who's an NHMA financial person and.
Never believe the news or the government until it comes out. That's my bottom line. Okay, it comes out differently all all the time.
Well, I mean, the governor's, uh, budget is, so the state has a twenty percent vacancy for jobs. So part of his budget, if it passes, as isn't amended, state workers, all state workers, police to childcare.
Yeah.
Ten percent raise as of July first, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Governor.
And another two percent July first of twenty-twenty-four.
What's wrong with that?
Which speaks to the labor shortage that we have.
That's what it's doing. That's what it's doing.
Municipal government, yes.
Yeah, it it's all referring to, today I got something says something today, come work for me, come, come, come work here, come work here. Because there's no workers.
No, it's it's bad.
And that's what I found out today. I can only go there if they don't have computers. I'm not good with computers.
The other part of his budget that you may have heard about and a lot of us are talking about, um, internally, I know that there's been some concern with, you know, the Police Chiefs Association.
I know.
And others is the governor's budget removes thirty-four licenses and fourteen regulatory boards.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Things like getting hawkers and peddlers licenses, right down to cosmetologists.
That's the minor stuff in the big picture.
Removes all of that.
But that's all the minor stuff in the big picture, you know what I'm saying? Hawkers and peddler, peddler, peddler.
It is until people.
Complain.
Or get sick.
Who's gonna get sick?
It happens.
COVID.
So there's two House bills, Senate Bill two-seventy, which puts another twenty million in bridge aid, um, and twenty million in highway block grants for this year, fiscal twenty-three, um, using state surplus. That is still on the table and Senate Bill one-thirty-eight, which proposes an increase of ten million to the PFA's remediation fund, um, that we're still watching. There's seventeen bills filed for pensions, including the one to restore the state's, contribution that they took away so many years ago. At one point, it was thirty percent and.
They took it all away, yeah.
Yeah, that is tabled. There's some bills, four of them, that are still alive. Although they are great for our employees, we need to be careful about the municipal cost to those. And one is the, uh, bill that will restore the group to back to the two thousand and thirteen days, um, as far as calculating their pension. Right now, as the bill is on the floor, the state would pick up the cost. But what we've seen in the past is the state picks up the cost for one year. Then they may pass legislation pushing it down to the.
Push it down.
Employers, um, so we're just being.
Us.
Careful. And we we'd rather see bills that have the state giving more. So that's everything that I have on budget.
I just want to say one, one, one to the board. The administrator has been here most of the weekend. Okay, her cars are parked parked out front. I'm amazed because of all the years I've been here, all the years I've been in the other towns, this one here is not afraid of work. Thank you. Kim, thank you.
We're very fortunate. Carry on.
If anyone, if anyone is on education buff.
Education buff?
I always look at it, um, this one actually helps Litchfield. Because there's a part of the governor's budget that will increase the base rate for adequacy. So and the base rate to the formula is good because that's just your, your population, right? Where Litchfield might not get as much as other towns is when you start talking about the population, like free and reduced. This over the biennium could be an increase of a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars.
For issue?
Statewide to education.
Oh.
So that would be, that would be good. When we, um, look at it, I think that's one that the school board should keep an eye on.
Remind them, please.
Send Mr. Cutter a note.
Yeah.
Hello, you know.
Who's the new chair of the school board?
Heidi Ames.
Who's in charge then now after? Who's the admini- administrator assistant at the school, the con- contact? Michelle was the contact person before.
I don't think they filled.
I don't think they, they didn't fill Michelle's position.
My God, they they get their butt together.
Speak with Doug generally.
Now communicate a lot of stuff better.
So the Warn Act. So the Warn Act is a notice, um, that you receive and this one was a little different for me because this is a California company. Um, Aspirations, they're out in California. They notified us and they notified, um, BEA, the Economic Bureau for the state. Today, we received more information. Generally, when a company is having a mass layoff, you get a warning. It is a mass layoff, but there are employees across the country. So they are being, um, careful and issuing every location where they have employees a warn notice. There's only one in Litchfield, one actual employee that will be laid off.
Okay, we could use here on the farm.
Do we have anyone for the government that we rely on? Some of these jobs, like the many on this list, some of the engineers or.
Yeah, there's.
Where people.
There's a lot of, but we don't know where the others are.
No, but it's a big name. It's a big list.
They are every, I mean, yeah.
You know where you're gonna find a painting contractor?
Who's laying, who's, who's this company? Aspirations?
Aspirations.
And how do they handle the employment for New Hampshire government employees?
No, 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 they are company, they're a company in California. But they have to notify the state economic bureau and the town.
Tell me you like that.
That where the employee resides.
So of this one employee's in town.
Right, but I, but I don't know if we rely on these other people, you know, for the state, that's.
We have no idea where all these others, um, reside.
Probably a whole lot of telecommuters.
They all work at home, let's put it this way.
That's what they state, that they're remote workers.
Yeah.
But it's strange because your other report said they're having such a, you know, need for people and then I'm seeing this layoff list. And that's why I was maybe looked a little confused there for a minute, but.
Financial, online financial resource and.
Is there a bank out there?
Yeah, it's, uh, but it it, they not only want, uh, gave it to us by email, they FedExed the letter today. Update on our fiscal twenty-three budget. Everything looks good. We went through it. We looked at it carefully. We have a meeting with Budget, um, Thursday night. The road fuel line is about half spent. We're watching that. Salt is about sixty percent spent, watching that. And Contractor Services is about sixty-seven percent spent, so we're watching as well. We're hoping.
No more snow. And then a mild December and we're good shape.
See where we are.
Kim, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
If you can make that happen, that would be great.
All we need.
That's all we need.
Go home and rub my magic ball.
Or it's gonna be an ice dog.
Yeah, that's worse.
There's nothing this week, guys, that is what we brought to you all. The weather's gonna be good all week, a little cloudy. Computer problems here and there, but that's all. Computers don't cause snow, it's called aggravation.
So update on, um, Senate Bill one-sixty-nine and I did, so the information that, um, we received, which is a proposed drinking water project and the, uh, map for the Merrimack River Crossing.
Yeah.
That and the letter that DES wrote to Senator Gray, that is information we did not have before. That's good information. As you know, there was an amendment that passed the Senate last week. The amendment does not exempt any property taxes. And the senator that proposed the amendment was very clear to state that. What it does is it prohibits the, um, public water system from charging back to the ratepayers the cost of the project.
Okay. Good.
Well, makes sense, right? Because the cost of the project is being paid by the state in New Hampshire and the nine point seven million dollars that Senate Bill one-sixty-nine would appropriate. We're watching it, um, we are trying to get a meeting with, um, DES, um, to talk more about it. Having said that, this is high on everyone's list. I did just, um, today, um, find out that on March twentieth last week, um, if you watch the Londonderry Town Council meeting, you'll see the town manager speaking about the report from Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
Um, so it's a, it's a very good meeting to watch. He talks about how it's a very low amount of money.
The big.
He doesn't give an exact figure for Londonderry to purchase the water system. But he says it's very doable. They have a number of residents that talk about concerns, um, and then they start to talk more about their PFA's. On March fourteenth, the federal EPA per, sent out a new proposed, um. Suggested rates and lim, and limits for the PFA's to be under. So right now in New Hampshire, New Hampshire said twelve to eighteen parts per trillion. The federal is saying four.
Whoa.
So.
Good.
If it passes, that may make a lot of homes that have tested need to be reevaluated. And I know when I spoke with the state, um, earlier today, they were saying some of these homes are being set up to be, um, reevaluated and tested again. There was one addendum that has been approved by DES. None of the streets were in Litchfield, um, but I'm watching, um, and they're alerting me as these addendums come out.
Thank you.
Who did the four trillion? Who did the four parts per trillion? Is that the federal?
That's the federal EPA.
Federal guidelines.
They did it. That was Mike Reagan?
They proposed it.
Because that was Pappas and Annie Custer working with Michael Reagan from EPA. They did it. That's what they said they needed to get that number.
Yeah.
So now you have a lot to point to. Okay, perfect.
What you need.
Kim, you got what you got.
But it's important, um.
Is that water line going right over the Hudson line where it comes into Litchfield?
Right to where you're starting.
It's right down by, um, and I asked Lou Karen to look at it be, and I also sent it to our assessors because.
It looks like the circumstantial highway route.
That's, I'm thinking it's state land, but I'm not positive on that.
So that's the white line, right here, the white line.
Yeah.
You like that title, Sir John?
Right there at the bottom of the town, you see?
Never ends.
The town line, yeah, and there's the water line.
Okay, they're gonna tie into the water system that goes up all the way up through, 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 yeah, and it goes up through there.
Yeah, okay.
Bob, would that be the old fish hatchery?
The old what?
Fish hatchery?
No, no, no.
That's at the, the, the south end of town at Autumn Lane, which is the new road that was built.
It's where the house was.
Okay, where the new homes are in, in there now.
Yeah.
Right, right on the town line, they're gonna come across there and feed that line that feeds those houses. Feed the line that comes up through Litchfield through there.
But it does, it does state that it's only twenty-eight hundred feet.
It's not long.
So it isn't that long.
It's not that long.
And then it says it's adding the pumps, pumps, the booster pump system.
That's separate.
What are they hooking in too? Must be our existing infrastructure.
There's an existing infrastructure that comes up through there. Okay, right now on the Route three eight and goes north. Okay, and it goes across. They have to tie into that because they just put that new southern, at the south, the south end of town. They put that line in, which is actually in Hudson, the water line itself.
Yes.
Okay, they're gonna come across the river, tie into that and pump it north. Okay, you know, it would correct a lot of things because there's lines up above. Okay?
Okay, yeah, that's a development right there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is.
They're trying to get to Londonderry.
Yeah, 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 as long as it gets to Londonderry.
They're probably gonna go right down that state circumstantial highway route.
The circumstantial highway picking up from there, they pick up in Hudson and go back into Londonderry. Because they, the Londonderry has to be fed as well in the future. Because they're tied into the same Litchfield system that we have now. Okay, back in the day when they built those things, it was based off the Litchfield wells. Okay, and those wells are gonna be shut down, so they're gonna tie into every, everything through, through that.
Can you point to that on the map down there?
Only way to.
It's a map?
Lower right is, I'm just thinking from the planning board more.
Is that part of it?
With water.
This is a white piece of paper.
No, 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 the bottom right, circumstantial highway, right?
Yes, circumstantial highway goes right through here, goes up, you know, tied, tied back and everything here. You have, I'm gonna say on, I don't know how to say this correct, but you have a lot of wells in this, in this area. That we're gonna feed into and supply, and there to be the feeder supply. They're gonna come in and feed that as well. They also have one down going through his in-laws that come, comes across the Taylor Road up, up through here now, that feeds into the town system down here. We got two. There'll be a second one that's gonna come in from down below. And you had the question the other day about the who owns the water line that you, Kim, you mentioned to me.
Yeah.
I said, that's pretty cut and dry because the line is definite in there. The surveyors have found it and who are these folks are, these lawyers, they gotta understand it. That's what it's all about. Okay? But that's what, that, they're talking about that if, because here's a circumstantial highway coming through here, all the way up through.
But normally, so even if it's state land. And a for-profit company goes on to state land, they are tasked.
You got it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I'm just thinking planning board, now that they have access to water. Is something gonna happen down there? I don't know who owns the land at this point. I know you've been digging with title searches.
So, oh, no, we've verified, the state may not agree, but we know, um, that the state owns it.
State owns this piece in here right now. And they bought that for the circumstantial highway to come over the year. That's already been bought and paid for.
Yes.
So that's what they're referring to and the one, the water line is right down here on the edge.
Yeah.
And they're gonna use that to come to this and go through. That's what it's all about.
See, Penachuk can't do, the problem with Penachuk doing the project is they can't invest in the infra- they can't invest in the infrastructure that would be, that would be needed, and charge the ratepayers until the system is actually used.
Correct.
So, they kind of had a catch-22 right now.
Put that in there.
And, which makes sense, so the state gives them money, the state funds the project, doesn't cost the ratepayers anything.
Correct.
And when it's operational, when it's operational, then there'll be maintenance and everything else.
And they're referring to a line that comes down through here, okay, that feeds the subdivision, all the houses that are in Litchfield down there, but the road is in Hudson. And they're gonna try to use that, down that line, and come up and feed into this. That's why it's all for the state and all of that, you know, you can't do anything.
They're moving a lot of this very quickly.
I know.
So, I think last board meeting, I told you I had spoken with Lou Karen, and we didn't think Hillcrest was gonna progress this year. Penachuck contacted me last Thursday and said, nope, we've sent it out for an RFP for construction. The RFP is due back at the end of April.
We'll find out.
And we will have, we will have Hillcrest and the roads off of Hillcrest started by the end of the year, before the end of 2023.
And that's an old system up there, based off wells that they have closed. Okay, they're closed, I think, two up there, because of iron. And they need to get a new water supply into to help feed that system.
Well, they mentioned they have, they may need a wetlands.
Oh, my surprise.
And a maintenance easement, so they'll be in touch. But it felt like, okay, you had just said that you were having materials, a material issue, and then they reach out and they contact me and say, oh no, we're gonna have it done by 2023. So, things are moving really quickly, and a lot of towns are, yeah, and they're involved.
May I ask just one more question, just for general, for myself? The water's coming in through that pipe. What are you saying, they're gonna, they're gonna put it into the wells that are there? Or are they gonna have another pipe going over to Londonderry?
They're gonna feed the system that we have.
Yes.
There'll also be a feed going to Londonderry, which is not that far off when you come into the...
Just go that way.
Hillcrest Road, okay, and that area there can feed into Londonderry.
So they're gonna put pipe in for that, that's not there, got it, okay.
We have the water tower in town that can help feed that for pressure reasons, okay, on Rocky Hill. Because Londonderry is lower than us, we gotta get a little help.
Thank you.
They are much lower than us.
So, two or three, three other things. So, Albuquerque, Kevin Brown let us know that he was contacted, and Continental will be paving from the 3A intersection up past Hidden Creek on Albuquerque during the beginning of April.
Yeah, that area needs some help because of the truck traffic in there has destroyed the road.
Really? Is it beat up?
Yep.
Tomorrow, you may see a drone. Eversaurus will be flying drones over their...
I shoot them.
Line that they're repairing. So, if, if any of our residents call you and say, if you see drones, that's why. It's just tomorrow when it's Eversaurus. And then the other item that I just received today, so it was too late to put it on your agenda.
I understand.
But I wanna make you aware of it, is the police department brought over to me a peddler's license. It's all signed off by fire, by police, and by our health inspector on the space, the, down at Little Tubes, so...
Small Tube?
Small Tubes.
A little bit of cooking on the side, that's cooking.
Is that in the site plan adjustment?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
So, they...
For who, for which one?
To have a food truck on an establishment.
No site plan required for that.
Oh, yeah, Mel's one.
We went back through, if you go back to Mel's Funway, and it had to be put on the site plan where their food trucks would be during spooky world.
Disagree with that, okay? In this case here...
This is just actually for his hawker's license.
I'm, I'm just asking a question, because it's set times.
Yeah.
I disagree with that.
Well, I mean, we did hold Mel's to the fire on that.
And Mel's is, Mel's is set times for a certain period of year. This is set time at an establishment, so I don't know where the gray line, I'm just trying to look at the big picture here. Are we gonna have a grievance effect? That's where Mel's had to put food trucks, and had to go in the back corner of it. They had, they didn't have to say exactly, they said this area would have food trucks in it, and this area up front, and it was a site plan.
Yeah, so did the vineyard, where the fire trucks.
Yes.
Is it a one-time event?
No.
It's set hours weekly.
This is where, it's my tube?
It's my tube, yeah, set hours. So, before we go down a slippery slope, you might wanna ask those questions.
No.
No, I agree with him on that.
I don't agree, because I've been in this trade for a long time.
It can't hurt to look, when's our next meeting?
If we, if we hold Vineyard for it, if we held Mel's to it, how is this different?
I did not require Mel's to do that. Can I just say something first? A hawker and peddler, a peddler, a peddler, a peddler guy show up here, here and there, everywhere. Okay, they used to come to the town, get the license, the selectmen approve it, without going to the selectman approval, because it's minor. Okay, you're not dealing with a lot of traffic. If you're referring to Mel's situation, it's more of a political situation, wait, wait, there. Whatever you do down there, there's somebody stomping on you. We never used to require these things in my lifespan. As a building inspector, we used to approve these things. In a parking lot for, they may be there for a month or two, and, and they're gone, okay? For as long as you got the hawkers and peddlers, you know, the area is big enough, they, you know, the load, which it is. You don't need plenty, board approval for that kinda stuff. And that's how I and the boards in the past that I have worked for have done. Here, we've had one case with Mel's, in which no matter what you do down there, there was somebody always, I'm gonna say, jumping on, 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 on us. You didn't need to do that here. But that's the politics of the whole thing.
So, I think with this, it's not their land, correct? It's...
Small Tubes land.
Small Tubes, and obviously, small tubes has given them permission. And then, so they're asking for the peddler's license, not only for that location, but for the fares, which they do down at Darapond. So, I think there's a state process that they go through to make sure that their, you know, their van has met all the health certificates and the, they've gone through all that, we have all that.
Yeah.
Our health inspectors reviewed it.
Yeah.
So, with Mel's, wasn't it, you were approving a site plan on Mel's?
It's outside food trucks, coming in seasonally for a certain period of time, parking there, and hawking goods.
And that was something...
Same thing for the vineyards gonna be, it's other people coming. So, the food provider is doing what they're supposed to do. I'm just asking, is it, are they allowed to put the truck on that site plan if it doesn't have site plan approval to have a food truck?
I agree, they, they're all right to do it.
So it's not the individual selling the food, they did the right thing by applying for the license. It comes down to is, is it on their site plan to allow to have that?
Question for this.
Now, we made two establishments, put it on it, what's different about this establishment?
Okay, let's step back then, let's say what difference is about this? If we're gonna go to the rec commission and have a weekend with an event, we have food trucks up there, do we need site plan approval for that? No, we do not. But today, we need it, okay?
Town land.
Town land.
Town land.
So, alls I'm trying to say is, we need to be consistent so we don't end up in an issue.
Okay, my legal side is going to hell.
Okay.
Can I get a variance?
No.
I just remember you and I sat in hours on top of hours of planning board meetings over this.
I don't think of anybody else we held that to.
The two that I know have been held to has been Mel's and then the water.
My concern, then, I mean, like I said, I just received it this morning. It was too late to go onto your agenda.
Okay.
But I wanted to bring it up, because I've seen on this book that it may already be occurring, so...
Paul J. at NRPC, he might know.
He'd probably be the best, maybe he can tell you the differences between three different venues.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I kind of, I agree with Steve on this one, I think being consistent is, is what we have to be. We can't pick and choose where we wanna enforce anything. Now, Jake comes back and says, we did approve the rec commission to have their...
Did the planning board approve, prove, prove, prove it?
It's town land.
Not, not the point.
It is a point, this is a private, this is a private enterprise.
Same thing with the guys down there.
I know, but Kevin, we, we held Mel's to the fire, and I, and I do think we need to be consistent.
We're not consistent then.
I don't know what happened before we got on the board. I can't speak for that, I can't speak to what we've had in front of us since then.
I'll, like I said, there's been a lot of people after Mel's, and I was gonna say politically, it's been wrong, okay? We all know about the signs being torn down and the whole nine, nine yards. But in a case like this, if a guy wants to go in for a couple, a couple weeks, put his vendor's thing out there, I have no problem with that at all.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it either, as long as the rules that are in place have been followed, and we enforce them equally across the board.
Our rules don't, don't require that, though.
I'll call you to, we'll call Jay.
It, it doesn't say how long.
It does not.
Say Sundays, Sundays.
It could be all year.
Could be, yes, it does not.
Let's find out the status of that, okay?
Let's, let's hold this off till the next meeting, and we can get some answers, and may, maybe we just ask them to file a site plan. Just, just to stop all the argument. Again, I don't have a problem with it, I just, I think that, you know, we, we, we were very vocal a couple years ago, and, you know, I, I think we have to stay with it.
I was not as vocal as you were.
No, you weren't.
The owner of the property or the peddler?
Which is unusual.
Owner of the property, it's expensive, it's not cheap.
I would agree, we need to be consistent.
Hey, Steve, your chair is right here.
Next week, two weeks.
I'm so sorry, thank you for...
Don't be sorry, you're doing your job, you're doing it well.
Thank you, Kim.
So, we'll have, what, you say you're gonna check with Jay or something to see what, if there's something?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we'll, we'll revisit it next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Next, we have selectmen reports. Rec commission, Mr. Weber.
Next rec meeting is tomorrow evening.
Nice.
At the past rec meetings, we have the recreation commission unanimously has agreed to rename Corning Field to the Kurt Schaefer Memorial Fields. After all the work he has done for the rec, for selectmen, and everything that the Justin Bissett, the recreation, is gonna rename the field down to Corning. There was nothing that really tied Corning, other than it was just Corning Road, and we're gonna move forward with naming it that. Other than that, nothing else from a rec standpoint.
I say no.
Well, it's under the purview of the recreation commission.
I know. All right, um, let's see. Budget committee, we meet Thursdays. School facilities, have you met on that?
No, that is a good one.
All right, planning board, let's plan.
There you go. It's month end, quarter end, so it's gonna be...
Lovely.
It'll be quick, summer pictures.
Kim comes with spreadsheets. We'll save you one, Steve.
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Kim, can you make it short?
I will, I always make it short, there you go.
No, you're the one.
There you go. All right, let's go to this sheet first with the spreadsheet.
First one.
All right, because some of this is what we're told to bring up during committee reports. So, we had spoken about adding the meetings for NRPC onto the website, and we had approval from the board, and hi, how are you? John, John will be doing that, he's mentioned in here. Yeah, so the middle section has the four quarterly meetings that we meet. Do you want to have the executive or the T-TAC meetings? They're, they're listed on the left and right. Kim Kleiner, you go to those, and Kevin Brown, right, monthly? So, I don't, you know, I don't want us to look overloaded, but, you know, it's up to what you wanna put on the calendar.
Are they public meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, why not? Somebody's on the board and they wanna go to a meeting.
They're, they're supposed to be public meetings, no matter what.
Yeah, they're all public, there's just certain voting members.
Yeah.
Each town has a voting representative.
A lot of residents have been coming up to me, saying, what is NRPC, what are they doing for us, kind of thing? So this is just a way for them to see. I'll give you this, there's all the dates on it, or, I don't know if John does this, does Donna do this? Puts the dates in the calendar?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll hand that off and figure that out.
I think you wanted to add NRPC to the page.
Yeah, coming up next. So number two, so that's different than number one there. So number two is, you said to look at the Hudson website as a model. So, John, do you want a picture of this, you're looking, or it's up to you? All right, so this is Hudson's website, this is item number two, right? If you actually click on the thing that says Town Hall there, go to the next page, you're gonna see a pop-up.
Okay.
You're working with getting departments separated from boards and committees on Litchfield, right? But there isn't, there's a national or regional planning one in the middle column that I underlined.
Yeah.
So, again, people at the voting booth was like, well, what do they do for us? Can you give us a little bullet list, kind of thing? So, if you click on this one, they take you right to NRP's website. I don't know if we want to do that or not, it's easy to do. Or we can put a little bullet list together of what they do. So, I always wanted to, you don't have to answer today, but just think about whether you wanna advertise that way. Then if you go to the next page, they actually, when I was there, it's our code of ethics in the third column. We still have to finish that assignment, remember the code of ethics we worked on? We last left it where we actually removed the ethics committee, because we saw that it interfered with the Right to Know Act.
Yes.
And also, it trampled our policies here. So, we're not gonna have a committee, but we have to get back to an ethics policy, and you wanted to stay in the lane, remember? So that has to come back. So, they had one here, just showing you that they had it, just to remind you, we've gotta get back to that at some point. All right, item four was the capital improvement planning committee, I think. We did go over the impact fees with Jay Mankara at the planning board. I sent them to you all in an email today. I, I don't like just the spreadsheet, you were there at the meeting as well. I want what Mr. Mayberry did way back, remember, Mayberry did these 30 years ago? I would like the definitions that he's using, the rules, what does and not qualify for each board or department. He was going over all formulas for all different groups, because we're gonna refer to that, not only at the capital improvement plan committee, but we're gonna refer to that legally when we, somebody comes in, like, from the rec commission and says, can we use impact fees? So we need something to point to. And you wanted comparisons of the before and the after values as well. So, Jay has agreed to do this, but you have the spreadsheet of what we saw. They're not, I don't think they're in shape enough right now, but we could use them to start on a capital improvement committee. We're gonna need something. And then part 4B is, when do you wanna start SIP committee meetings? Again, you guys, whenever you think you, you want us to begin that, or...
Quarterly, I thought is what we did, starting after town meeting.
The CIP?
CIP, final, what, what, well...
We get the final five years approved, we never approved.
Approved it, yeah. But after that, it was a quarterly one, because it was a living document. What passed, what didn't pass, how are we gonna move things within it?
Well, there was an ongoing evaluation.
Yeah.
So there might be, it sounds like there might be more things coming up in between, so it might happen more.
Does Zach come back to the board? So, does the five-year plan come back to the board?
Six years, but we only approved one.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So it comes back, we have to have a public hearing, and we have to accept it.
Okay.
So the protocol's always been, the CIP did it, then they bring it to the planning board, then there's a public hearing, then it goes to the board to select, and it'd be adopted.
And we went through all those, those steps, but it was only for the one.
Because the fees... Because the fees on were large for police.
For the police and the fire. They run up quite a bit.
Yep.
And, you know, so we started looking at, um, the next day, fees that are being paid back. And I'd be concerned if the board wasn't okay with a police department, you know, and the timeline of the police department actually running into that window where you are paying that.
You may be forgetting about the six-year window. He was, the formulas, too, are based on population, keep growing, growing, growing. But we had, and you might have been on the board, the Planning Board at the time, where we determined the build-out of the town. We could no longer build any more homes, and we, no more taxes.
Oh, yeah.
And I wanted to make sure that wasn't, that he halted at that calculation.
At the false point.
That's in our master plan, and we'll look up the number. We'll look that number up. So there's work to do there. It's rough, so, but he delivered something, but I just don't want a spreadsheet.
Hey, Kim, one more, one, one thing, and I know, and I noticed at the towns, if there's a proposal for a site plan for commercial use or something like that, they put a proposed plan on their website. Okay, so the residents could see what's going on. Can we do that through Litchfield's?
Yeah, or you do.
Click on the planning portal.
Did you do that for the, the gas station up there? Joan does it? I couldn't find, find it, that's why. I don't go there. Okay.
Well, we could. I mean, we can do more of that.
Yeah, we do a little more, because I noticed in Hudson, and the reason why I'm saying this, that the corner of West Road and one, 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 two.
It's only a three.
There's a lot going on down in that sector. And I wanted to see if we all know what's going on. My son-in-law, who lives in Hudson, showed me, showed me the site, site plans and the whole nine yards, which is nice. I didn't see that ever, ever coming out of here. But that's, tell them not to pay. Techie.
Yeah, they're cleaning up the gravel pit over there.
All gone.
Number five, we have to come back to is the metal detecting policy on town land.
Yeah.
So, it's not gonna be you giving the permits. It might be the Board of Select. And you were still working with legal on that.
Yes, so... I'm gonna be the facilitator, I guess. But the boards or the commissions are gonna be the people that say yes or no.
Okay.
Um, I'm just gonna make sure it gets where it needs to go.
Okay. So this is gonna come up on agenda. I just didn't have time to get it to her this time. And then the lost and found is gonna be with the police department. It'll be, if somebody comes to us saying they lost a ring.
Yep.
It's gotta go to the lost and found, right?
Is that in the planning part?
This is all part of a policy that we have seen other towns using, so...
The planning department are getting lost, lost and found?
No, the police department will have the lost and found list.
Well, that's the selectmen's side of it.
The selectmen just give them an option to go on the town land.
I haven't found a dog yet, so I'm all set.
So that was written to the current RSAs, and I know legal's looking at it. The only thing we couldn't find was anything about cemeteries, and I'd like to, there was no RSA about that, but I'd like to put that in. We don't...
It's Dr. Steve.
I know, but I, but again, metal detecting on town land, right? We don't, so... So we're running that all by town council.
I'd include the cemeteries in that, because the town owns the cemeteries.
Well, I thought there was language in one of them, in one of the ones that we looked at, where it just said, no metal detecting on cemeteries.
Oh, good. Okay, let's, let's reference it then.
Because that makes sense to me. That is not a place where you should be metal detecting.
Okay. Because it had every other type of land.
Grave sites, you could find a good ring, but I'm just saying, you know...
Okay, good. That's good to hear, because it was saying conservation land, recreation land. It was going through each one, but I didn't see a cemetery. All right. And then I don't know, we'll work with the process in a form later. Albuquerque signage also went in. I emailed it to everybody. So that was a grant paid for by NRPC. I was surprised they didn't do the Hillcrest intersection. They started at Pinecrest and went towards the school. And it was still a lot of money, but you can do it in piecemeal. You know, and basically focus on the schools. They had six streets. Where they, I know Kevin Brown is not too happy about it. So if you're on this side of the street and you wanna go to the bike path, or to the parks, right, near Darapond, or to get to the school, there were six streets where you just have that straight painting, like a crosswalk like that, going across. So, I understand the paintings probably, might, might be expensive or get ruined with the plows, but that was one, one option. And then the Pinecrest intersection itself is not ADA, it's not compliant. But once you start working on it, you can fix it at that point.
We had some issues where the older way it did it was, it's, it's in compliance with the law.
It was back then.
Back then. Okay, right now, it's not.
Right.
It's all, but things take time.
That's what I said, that they, so they gave you a plan to do it in pieces.
Right.
It's still expensive, about $388,000, if you did, if you did everything. But if you just do the paint, it's cheap, right? You don't have to put the sidewalks everywhere.
Just carry with the curb, and you're all done, slope it down.
So I have, so Planning did discuss this.
Yeah.
Afterwards, I went and asked the police department to pull some data for me.
For accidents? For accidents, yeah?
Accidents, pedestrians, um, running of stop signs, things of that, so I, um, I'd have to agree with Mr. Brown.
That's low.
Yeah. If you were, before you were going to tackle $388,000.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
I would try some police cars.
I would look at some blinking lights or something like that.
I, I think you have an enforcement that could be done.
Okay, that said, too, but we'll give you the pictures of the kids trying to get through those cars as well. There's, there is a problem. During two times of the day, the peak hours, but there is a problem. Okay, again, it's not, no answer here. Just gave them the update of what the grant money paid for. They really should look at Hillcrest, but...
Have a blinking light in town.
Solo ones work well.
All right. So, let's see. The last thing is, we talked about maybe an energy commission. We weren't sure about that memorandum of understanding, that timeframe, and... Just again, it'll probably show up in an agenda item later, sooner hopefully. All right, so my committee reports. Sorry, guys. All right, here we go. It was quarterly, so that's the problem. NRPC's quarterly, right? All right, let's go quickly. I don't need to do Board of Selectmen, but welcome aboard to Stephen Cannon.
Ten words or less, please.
And thank you to Richless Alice.